According to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the Bastrock City Council will hold a regular meeting on September 22nd, 2015, City Council Chambers, 1311 Chestnut Street, Bastrock, to consider the following matters. First is called order. We know that Councilmember Jackson is representing us and everybody else we can think of at the Texas Municipal League Conference this week and will not be present. Others are here. We have a court. We are called order. We're privileged tonight to have with us a distinguished, long-term leader in Bastrock, Mr. Reed Sharp, President of First National Bank, and I don't know how long a list we can make of things you've been involved in, Reed, but we appreciate your presence. It may be pretty long, don't tell us that. He's got ladies and the pledges at the flag. Please stand.
My pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Reed. In response to the fact that last week was D.A.C.S.A.S., and a very important celebration for our Hispanic community in this country, the fact that we were founded as a Mexican city, and in honor and respect for our Hispanic citizens, tonight's prayer will be read in Spanish and in English. And there's only one rule: if you speak Spanish, you are not permitted to laugh at my German accent.
Dios todo poderoso, te invito a los que elhacen porros, pueblecos en esta ciudad. El espíritu de sobre diría, redad yus si sian. A fin de que el ambiente de siempre es sus, ponce a nos con fermeza, de proposita para promover, el bien estar de todo el pueblo. Amen. Almighty God, empower those who hold office in this city with the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Amen.
Thank you. We are very pleased to have with us in our partnership program a gentleman who I am -- one of the pleasures of being the mayor of Bastrock is the chance to work with county judge, and we have a spectacular one. One who understands what's going on in this county, who has insight into almost everything that's of value and of importance to us, is a smart thinker, is always a little step ahead of everybody else, and with that cowboy hat even looks like a Texas county judge. Judge Poppy, would you come forth? It's your moment to share with us what you want and see if we have anything to share with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wish my wife had been here to hear that introduction. I'll try to tell her what it was like. Thank you so much for inviting me to come to address you all tonight a little bit. We are indeed partners, the city and the county, together we have so many common interests and are working on some significant common projects right about now. So I wanted to address a couple of things that might be of interest to you, and then I would be happy to try to answer questions or address others that I don't happen to think of. Regarding the Activity Center, otherwise known as Recreation Center, perhaps in conjunction with the YMCA, we are moving forward with the $1.5 million grant through HUD to benefit the city. I've been working with the city manager regarding the details there, and I think I wrote him last week asking for an answer by the end of this month if we could get a definite yes from you, and then we need to follow that definite yes with a definite location pretty soon. So as you deliberate about those matters, keep in mind that we'll need to firm up some of those details as we go forward. Now that the city manager and I discussed the fact that some of the pictures not yet come into focus for real, and I'm aware of that and willing to be patient about that, as long as HUD is patient with me, so I will try to be the middleman there and run some interference for you. But thank you, Mike, for what you're doing there. I wanted to say just a word about Gold Green and its announcement recently that they're not going to be able to continue their business of harvesting the burned trees in the forest. When they first came on site about three years ago, we were very excited. In fact, then I called them godseems, because without them coming to town and offering to do what they were often do, we had no alternative. There was no viable alternative for all the dead birds, trees in the forest. They worked diligently for a couple of years, and I think they gave it the old college try. It just didn't work out for a couple of reasons. Their business plan failed, and management is always an issue. I'm not going to say against their management, I'm just saying that it would have taken a very skillful manager and a very skillful management team to have guided that organization through all the hurdles and obstacles along the way, not least of which is our endangered species act here, and all that means, and the delay and the slowness of being able to get into property and harvest these trees. And I think after a couple of years of maybe the low hanging fruit, it became apparent to them that they just could not harvest trees fast enough to keep their plant operating and generate a profit out of the expenses. And then the cost of a monetary for the Houston Totes was astronomical, it was unbelievable, not pride, I'm embarrassed to even say the number, but it was huge. So all of that taken, we now are trying to develop Plan B. I don't anticipate another firm coming to town and wanting to take their place. I've had no contact over the last three years with anybody else who was interested in competing with them for that difficult job of harvesting these fire burned trees. And so our Plan B, as the court has so far approved, it would be for us to either staff up ourselves or to hire contractors to go into the lots where most people are interacting with the vacant lots, particularly pine forest, Asian Village, Circle D, and Casey Estates, and cut the dead trees and at least get them on the ground. We're going to try to give the property owner the option of what to do then. Once the tree is on the ground, do they want us to bring a machine in to mulch the tree in place and leave the mulch on the surface, or do they want us just to leave it and nature it from there? One of the big obstacles that Gold Green was running into late in their operations was that folks didn't want to own their property, because there is a lot of natural regeneration, a lot of natural growth. Nature's amazingly resilient, and there are millions of pine trees growing in the forest today that were planted naturally. So we don't want to harm those in the process of getting rid of the old snags. So very likely, many people will offer us just to cut the tree down and let it fall, let it lay where it falls. To me, that would be a better option than having to look at it every time you and I come to town or go to Smithfield or drive out to Hamburg or other deal. So I'm just saying that these are challenging times. We have some funds actually that the state granted us in the Peyton Third Legislature, and I'm confident that the state would approve our redirecting those funds for felling these dangerous hazardous trees, particularly in the populated areas. I wanted to mention just briefly our resiliency competition. You've read about that in the paper recently. HUD is in the business of helping communities recover from natural disasters, and here we are, four years downstream from the 2000 Legion fires, and they recently announced a nationwide natural disaster resiliency competition in the RC, and made about a billion dollars available for the entire program in the entire nation, and challenged states and communities that would qualify to apply for those funds. To qualify, you had to have suffered a natural disaster between 2011 and 2013. We fit into that window. Only three local jurisdictions in Texas fit into that window. Travis County, in conjunction with the city of Austin, primarily because of the unincreased floods, the Halloween flood you may remember, the city of West, and Bassdrop County. And so it felt us to help not only define the program, but define how Texas might be successful in getting a fair share of that money, but what we can do with it if we were to get it. And we put together a package of seven projects that you've again heard about, read about, and I want to thank your city manager again, very responsive, called me and said, "Let's get together. Your staff and my staff will sit down at that table back there, and you walk us through those and tell us how we can help you be successful in getting the grant funds that will help us all in partnership." And thank you again, Mike, for your cooperation there. That application has been submitted to GLO. There's a little bit of a public notice period that we'll go through, but by the end of October or so, they'll be sending that up to Washington. And we hope that right after the first two years, we'll be getting some answers from them as to what part of our program is going to qualify. I'm confident that we will get funds. I don't know how much we'll get, whether all the projects that you've asked for will be funded, or if they'll all be funded to some extent, but we will find out about that and let you know as soon as we can. And I say that again, I say thank you for your cooperation. Finally, your mayor and I just came back from a meeting this afternoon with Texas Parks and Wildlife concerning our own state park out here, particularly the asset that has been such a big part of Bastrock for the last eight years, 30, 70 or 80 years, and that is the golf course out there. And whether it has a future, whether it can be revived, whether it can be funded, whether there's a business plan that makes sense for everyone to put that golf course back into operation. I can tell you that there were no answers, there were lots of questions. Everyone at the table wanted to explore all the possibilities, and I am committed from a county standpoint to be a part of that conversation. And if it turns out that there's just no business plan that works for rebuilding the golf course, then we have to turn our attention to what's the next best thing? What can we do now going forward that will attract visitors to Bastrock and that will add to our quality of life here? And how can we use that state park resource out there to make Bastrock a better festival? So those are just some of the things that are on my part of mind now, and I'll take questions if there are any questions. I'd be glad to answer questions about these things or anything else you'd like to talk about.
Judge, how long are you going to anticipate you will be thinking and working with companies to come in and manage the golf course?
How long it takes? We're just at the beginning of looking at those alternatives. I will tell you that Parks and Wildlife told us that they have been looking for the last couple of years, they've been asking for vendors to make proposals about how they might operate a golf course, and they've made two public appeals for vendors to come in and operate a golf course, and no one has responded.
So my question, I guess, is, I don't know if it's not a question anymore because you've answered, but I'd just like to say, I wouldn't want to go on indefinitely because there are some other good possibilities we're using that.
You know, we just have to face reality, and the time has come, but I would bet, I think we all, Mayor and I, together, also Senator Watson's office was there, Senator Representative Siri was present, someone from Blue Mountain Electric was present, so we had a good contingency from Bastrock County, and all of us want to explore every possibility. We talked about turning over every rock, to make sure that we've examined all the chances of rebuilding the golf course, but if that can't be done, then of course we want to find another way to use that asset and to tie it into what we're doing here in Bastrock and make it a destination for families, much like it's been for our families over the years. Because going forward, thanks for changing the system for the program.
Thank you, Judge.
Paul, do you -- really appreciate Mike's involvement with your resiliency grant, whatever you call it, proposals. I assume that you know that if there's anything that we as a council can do to represent the city and support it, letters, call cards, or whatever, we're ready to do it amongst us.
Yes, sir. I'm aware of that, and again, your city managers have made that abundantly clear, not just with words, but with actions, and was very responsive. We had a very quick turnaround to get that application put together with contributor agreements, and he was right there, very responsive. We appreciate that.
Any other questions, conference? Anything we want to tell the judge while he's here? He's sitting duck. You could --
Just a comment, Exo.
Yes, sir.
We know you're close by. Thank you, Paul. Another partnership, of course, our primary partnership was the Bastrock Economic Development Corporation Executive Director, Charlie.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mike, for having me this evening, and you for being here tonight. It's my monthly update from the DPC, the DPC Board. We did have our regular meeting last night here at the council chambers. We had Mike Barnes in from Barnes Consulting Group out of Plankton to lead a strategic planning and program work presentation, where he had gone through our current strategic plan and gone in depth into target industries and what he sees as the, through his 35 years of experience, the best course of action moving forward in our recruiting efforts to attract high-paying, quality jobs to Bastrock and capital investment. We did a lot of workforce development and the programs that we're working on there. That seems to be the critical thing that we're asked most from the community, is to create quality jobs and capital investment for the demand of work and live here in Bastrock. With that, what we were tasked with is to come back to the board in the next couple of months with an action plan of how we're going to take those target industries and our recruiting and marketing efforts on workforce and education development programs, as well as our business retention and expansion programs, and what those programs are going to look like for the next year, three years, five years, and how we're going to implement the different processes and strategies that we're going to utilize to make this successful. They did accept the RCL Co. Housing Study that we've been working on for some time, studying the Bastrock market. It's very positive to our developers and builders, and those that have reviewed and advanced acceptance are very encouraged about the opportunities to come to Bastrock and to develop neighborhoods and to build houses here and to allow other people to enjoy this great community that we call home. We also are, in our activity levels, we're seeing activity across all sectors, whether it be primary job creation, education, workforce development, we're seeing good progress there. We've started making business retention and expansion visits. Our commercial development in affordable housing projects that we're working on, we're seeing good opportunity in there for the community. Across the board, all sectors, we're seeing good economic growth and good economic opportunities here in the community. We did host comptroller Glenn Hagar last Wednesday at the convention center for a town hall meeting that was very well attended. I want to thank Mike Talbot for coming over, and the city staff for coming over for that. We toured the art foundry prior to the town hall meeting, and deep in the art, Clint Howard did an excellent job of showing the comptroller what they do and the significance of the foundry here in Bastrock and our cultural arts in the community. So Gary was at the comptrollers meeting as well, and we appreciate everybody that attended that. We do have coming up on the 29th of October, in association with the Board of Realtors, a Smart Growth Planning Course from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the convention center. The Board of Realtors will have more information coming out about the registration process for that. They received a grant from the National Association of Realtors to bring in a Smart Growth trainer, who happens to actually live in Austin, but they're going to come out to a seminar. See, you can use for the brokers, but it's also in the open to the community and the council to attend the DPC Board. Everybody who's interested in Smart Growth is welcome to attend, but we'll have registration details coming up in the next couple of weeks through the Board of Realtors. And I believe that is all I have for the season. I'll try to finish. Bill, it is now.
Have you all been discussing the post-secondary education and where's that at the priorities of the EDC?
It's a very high priority. We have a meeting on Friday in our office with a lot of the state and regional partners and local partners on that related to some very specific programs, look at the house at Bastrock High School. We have a follow-up meeting with those partners on Friday this week, and then we'll turn around after that meeting in November. That program and the education provider that's going to be working on that portion of education workforce development is coming quite a ways away, aren't we long? We've moved the bar there quite a good distance in what we're doing with VHS and VISD. The state and the governor's office has come in to assist us in putting that program together, and so we've got economic development, tourism, the governor's office engaged in this, as well as the governor's initiative on workforce initiatives, the TWC is engaged in that, as well as the capital area workforce board and our local TWC office. We had one of the state associations in that industry that we're working in. Their executive director, president, came out and gave a very specific knowledge to the education provider in that sector about what their needs are. And what we discovered in that meeting was, even though that sector is our most advanced sector in education and workforce development in conjunction with VISD programs, there's other opportunities within VISD and VHS and Cedar Creek High School that we're going to be able to look at and go, what facilities are currently available that we can go and do some vocational technical dual credit programs through the existing infrastructure, education infrastructure in the region. It was a really, really good meeting. As I was talking about, we had 18 people in our conference room there, 12 sitting at the table, and then those of us like myself that are not as important as the governor's office, sitting on the sidelines. We're really there on this, and this is to facilitate the meetings and bring the right partners to the table, but it was good conversation and we were really encouraged where we're going with education, especially the cluster that's most advanced, we could expand that to other clusters here in the community. We've moved the bar a good lot.
Are there any plans to pursue adult education outside of VISD?
That is part of the conversation that we're having is, if we can get these clusters established, how can we do after hours education as well for adult education in those students that will be graduating high school? These HV5 clusters, these students, the first students are sophomores now, and so they've got two more years going through high school. We want to get them dual credit while they're in high school, but when they exit, we also have to be able to have the additional certifications and programs that they need. So it's a layering process, and so there's a lot of dynamics in the facilities part of this that we have no control over in the current facilities, and so we're going to have to work with the education provider, VISD. And then there's opportunities, we learned of a dual credit grant program that'll open up this fall, and I believe it's the second year that program has existed, where the education provider at VISD can go and apply for a $250,000 grant via equipment for the facilities for these HV5 programs, or 16 career paths that have been identified through HV5. And so through these meetings, we're identifying funding sources outside of the community that we can bring in additional dollars from the state and other resources. So it's moved along a lot.
In your discussions, have you been talking about how you can be more supportive to the businesses on 71?
We have. That has been a very active conversation with the board. We traditionally have not had a business retention and expansion program in Bastrock. To some extent, we have, but we're going to have to take it to a whole new level with what we're doing. We're adding a full-time staff person that's going to be split between education, workforce development, and keeping those programs moving forward, as well as business retention and expansion. We're going to set some goal out there for Jeanne and what she's doing in our office. We're going to visit a very significant number of businesses in this community, both our primary employers as well as those out on 71. And we're working on opportunities to look at assisting those guys in being successful in what they're doing. And assistance isn't always money. Sometimes it's just ideas and helping them and bringing people in for education and training programs. You're going to see a full slate of training programs from us through the next physical year. We're working on a program for November, December, that's going to be real good for the community, we believe, related to looking at what we can do in economic development and what's available to us. But we're also exploring opportunities to do hospitality and training, to be able to offer some of those programs through Main Street. We've got a partner that has offered up some of their trainers to be able, when they're in town, working for that company, that they will come over and also do it for the community as well, which when we can partner with them on that, it saves us the expense of having to bring those trainers into town. And that applies both to downtown and to the 71 tour, but we're going to be more active in our business retention and expansion program than we've probably ever been, and try to get to some number of businesses. We haven't quite said what that number is going to be yet, but it'll be a pretty significant number.
Glass?
Sean, thank you, thank you for the work you did.
Thank you, Mike, thank you.
In honor of our planning department and other people involved in community planning, I have a proclamation for Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant, affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people live, work, and play, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens to understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation made to the quality of our community and environment. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and others engaged citizens who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Bastrock. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional community and by all the boards and commissions that work with the Bastrock Planning and Development Department, most specifically the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the Disciple Sign Review Board, Impact Fee Advisory Committee, Construction Standards Board, Historic Landmark Commission, Form-Based Code Task Force, Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, and Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Bastrock, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to the public service by these professionals. Now therefore being resolved, that the month of October 2015 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the City of Bastrock, Texas, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. And I would ask Melissa to come forward and receive this with those who are a part of those commissions so named, or anybody that loves planning. Thank you very much. And Melissa wants a picture taken. Anyone say yes?
Sure.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I really appreciate you doing this proclamation. I really appreciate you doing this proclamation. I've been lucky enough to work not only with a great staff, but with a great group of boards, commissions, and task force that really, I do think, make Bassdrop a better place. So it's very exciting to work with all these boards and commissions. And with that, since I'm up here, I thought I would tell you that our efforts on the Form-Based Code were recognized by not only the local chapter, which we will be receiving the current planning award from the American Planning Association. They're having the awards ceremony here in Bassdrop this Friday at lunchtime, but we also received the state planning award for current planning. We're lucky enough to not only be recognized by the local chapter, but state as well. So I really appreciate the work that all of our boards, commissions, and task force do.
Thank you. I used to work in a small church in Bassdrop back in the old days with long-range planning that somebody turned the coffee pot on before church. I'm glad that we have progressed way past that in many ways. Thank you very much to everyone involved. Citizens comments. Joe Albers would like to speak to us.
First, on behalf of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Bassdrop County, I wanted to say that we're anxiously looking forward to the council's response to our request for the extension on the deed to build on the land in Bogright Park. And I also wanted to make a clarification, if I could. I think the last city council meeting, it seemed that there was a comparison being made between the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA, as if the two organizations were interchangeable. And while both organizations offer important community services, I think it's important to draw a distinction that we do serve very different community services, fulfill different needs of the community. While the YMCA offers recreational programs and exercise activities for families for membership fee, the Boys and Girls Club offers youth development aimed at academic achievement and character and leadership development, self-esteem building, and avoidance of risky behavior for kids and teens. And while the YMCA recreational services are important to the physical health goals of the individual members of the community, I think the services offered by the Boys and Girls Club for Youth Development is vital to the overall socioeconomic health and welfare of the entire community and for the future of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Kay, anything? Yeah. Can you do a number of announcements? You'll have to sign up otherwise. Can you announce it?
I can announce it.
Good. We've got number one, number two announcement. Kay, anything on the papers?
No, I don't have anything to report, but I can. I just wanted to bring up the... Sorry.
You're reporting as a subordinate for our...
I'm the head of the steering committee.
I understand that, because I work in the agenda here. You're operating as a subordinate to our council members, our representative. Is it okay with you? Please proceed.
And all I wanted to let you know is that the next steering committee meeting is Monday, October 5th at 6:30. So we'll be moving forward. We'll have the results of the survey. That's the next big step in the planning process, and everybody's welcome to attend. If they have anything they want to say.
Thank you. And since this is not Citizens Comments, thank you for your service. We're glad to have, I'm especially glad to have someone with your ability and experience leading this group. So thank you so much. And I'll salute the wisdom of the group for electing. Gary, do you have an announcement?
I have an announcement. Just wanted to let everybody know that we've got a really special event coming up in October, October 24th, Saturday night, 7:30 at the Bassdrop Christian Outreach Center. We have Doyle Dykes coming to town. He is unbelievably awesome. There are words that can describe his playing ability on acoustic guitar, and electric as well, but he plays mainly acoustic fingerstyle guitar. And I didn't really plan to make this announcement, so I just have what I have in my pocket. I'll leave some little reminder cards over on the table in the corner if you want to take one. I'll bring it up to the next meeting as well. But it's a real opportunity to see a world-class guitar show right here in Bassdrop. And if you support that, it means we can do more of these events. There's no one missing charge, but donations are welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Other announcements? Mike, City Manager's report.
All right. I'm just going to give you a few of the highlights and then refer back to the council. Item C is just the schedule of events for the council through October. Do want to remind you of the joint meeting with BDC and the importance that we've got to come up with some type of an agenda to have a discussion. Item Y gave you an update on the bus shelter in the northern area of town and provided you a drawing of those plans as exhibit B to my report. Item K, the excess ramps on the proven district is moving forward. We do have a conference call in the morning. The next item is going to take just a couple of minutes. That's why I wanted to go through the other items very quickly. I'd ask you to turn page A to my report, item A, and refer to exhibit C1 and C2. This is an update on changing the parking alignment on Main Street from Pine Street to Chestnut Street. My discussion on this item will be based on exhibit C1 and C2, so you'll need to refer to those as we discuss this. Been working with members of the city staff to implement the council's directive that the parking line on Main Street running from Pine Street to Chestnut Street be realigned. As the staff and I understood the realignment directive, the council wanted the parking that the current white stripe at the end of the parking lane be extended two feet, which would allow for big trucks to be able to use the head-in parking and not be a violation of the parking ordinance by their vehicle extending over the white line. On the east side of Main Street, the council directed that the head-in parking be converted to a large two-by-one parallel parking. Exhibit 1 illustrates this realignment of the parking portion. We note, and after this realignment is graphically applied to the photo in C1, we noted the following. The center stripe dividing the travel lanes will be moved two feet to the east. Moving the center stripe two feet to the east will result in the travel lanes being maximum 10 feet wide. And that because of that being 10 feet wide, the cars park, parallel parking on the east side will have the driver of their vehicle open their right door into the travel lane. Staff and I agree that this approach is not the safer, is not the safer for those vehicles that are parallel parking. Exhibit C2 is an alternative to the council directive. I believe the council's basic intent of what the council was wishing to accomplish, which was to provide parking spaces on Main Street from Pine to Chestnut. This option is the following, that the head-in parking on the west side of Main Street remain in its current alignment. By maintaining the current line on the west side, actually the center line will be moved over just a little bit so that we can create two 11-foot travel lanes. And then we will still put the two-by-one parallel parking spaces on the west side and ask that the big trucks park over there. This alternative offering is for both north and south lanes, and ultimately will end up being between 11 and 12 foot. And we believe it's much safer. And based upon evaluating this, the larger trucks will still be able to maneuver in and out of those parallel parking spaces and not have trouble or cause any traffic issues. So I just need some direction. Do you want to stay with C1, or do you want us to...
So, Mike, it looks like C2 shows parallel on both sides. I didn't hear you say that.
No, it's not. It just shows that where the, we would be restriping that, it will remain head-in, but the white line remains exactly where it is now.
And it's better to just switch, and that works better. I want to recommend to the council, I think this is my idea, anything that works and is safer is something I want to support. I appreciate the staff's coming up with this kind of detail. I think it accomplishes what I hoped to accomplish in recommending this to you all. And so I recommend this check. Is there a consensus of comment?
I agree with you, Ken. I think that's a great idea.
And when you want to vote?
I would like to make that motion.
Oh, will we? Do you want to motion, Mike?
Yes, I do.
This will be... Kelly's moving. Kay's second to any discussion? Anne, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Blowen?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnallyn?
Yes.
Mayor Tim Del Rosso?
No.
Councilmembership?
Yes. Thank you all very much. Mike, thank you for your diligence and putting safety first. The next item is another change in our issues that we just want to bring to attention. This is regarding relocation of the mailbox behind the post office. My discussion on this item is based upon exhibit D. This item is referenced to the current location of the drop-off boxes behind the U.S. Post Office. Currently, the location of the drop-off mailboxes is very close to Spring Street and the alley. The drop-off mailboxes are anchored right up to the curb on the alley behind the post office. Alley A, which is approximately 15 feet wide, is only wide enough for one traffic lane. Though traffic flows both north and south based upon driver courtesy system, this alley is extremely tight. Staff has been working with the postmaster and the owner of the post office building, Mr. Albright, on a plan that will allow for rotation of the drop-off box so that there will be access from the other side, as shown in exhibit D, and basically relocating the mailbox by 180 degrees. The implications of rotating this, vehicle access to the drop-off boxes will be from Spring Street, travel northbound until the vehicle reaches the drop-off box, at which point they will drop off their mail. Once the mail is dropped off, the vehicle traffic will commence traveling in a north direction where a curb cut will be constructed, traffic will exit on Alley A, and then travel in a norly direction. And that will be arrows pointing all that direction. Mike? Mr. Albright called me today and seemed concerned about some people he had talked to at the post office, although I let him know that the postmaster, the city manager, the police chief, and our public works director were signed off on this. He said he didn't quite understand and suggested that we maybe do some spray paint where the lane is going to be for a few days so people can see what that is, especially Mr. Albright. This picture, I think, helps, but would that be possible?
Sure.
Before we move ahead. He is the owner of the property. The post office leases from him. And so we had gotten permission from him, I believe, to put a curb cut through there because it was his property. The idea came, I wish I could claim it was my idea, but the idea came from the postmaster when I went to him to say, we've got to do something to fix this horrible problem on this alley. So is that something you can work?
We just need permission from Mr. Albright.
Yeah. So I think if we did that and then checked back with him, I think he would see the value of it. Is that, other comments?
I've got two comments. One is, have we taken into consideration the parking spaces that will be eliminated by this? Is that an impact on parking in that area?
No, but I understand if that goes through, that Mr. Albright will do away with the parking over here. These parking spaces will remain.
Okay. And then secondly...
I think there was one, Gary, and there was one place where the postmaster said people park where he doesn't want them to park. And this movement will eliminate their being able to park there. So the one, I think it's just one loss.
Okay. And then the other question was, have we taken into consideration when the mail truck comes to pick up the mail at the end of the day, which is when I'm always dropping mail in the box at the last second before he picks up the mail? There's this big bobtail truck that parks in that loading dock slot. If the truck is parked in that slot, will it block the driveway from people being able to use the mailbox?
I would say that what we would have to do is put spray, spray the lane down, and then see what the truck does when it maneuvers in there, and take some photographs and report back to you on that.
Okay. And I asked the postmaster that question. He was satisfied that it was a, whatever it was, was an acceptable deal for him. So hopefully we'll check that. Okay. Other questions?
Probably.
Okay. So Mike, you're moving ahead, right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Last item is just that we've opened the rodeo arena to open night riding for the citizens. And exhibit E just shows a picture of the arena, and I think it's been greatly upgraded just in the short time that we've had it. So I think the council should be pleased with the efforts of the streets and Parks Department and Mr. Joe in getting that taken care of.
Yeah, I sure do want to thank the Parks Department. It's, people have been reporting to me they're very much happier and they're very happy that we're doing the improvements. Has that program started already? Great. Thanks. Yes, it has, is the answer. Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate the patience of the citizens because it took us a little while to get going on this after not having ever managed this rodeo arena. So again, if you hear anything, I hope people remain patient as we move ahead with our new program. Mike, good job.
I'll be glad to answer. And I just went through the highlights. I'll be glad to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions? There are items for the future. Mike, thank you very much. Thank you for being a good city manager. We will move into the consent agenda. Are there any requests for removing any of these from the consent agenda? If not, we will vote on items A, A1 through A6 as one vote. Item A3 is second reading in accordance with City Council, City of Bassdrop, supervising the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 13, Utilities, amending Section 13.02.006 reconnect fees and service fees for delinquent accounts, amending Section 13.07.01 residential service, 13.07.002 commercial service, and 13.07.03 key accounts, adding Section 13.07.06 disconnect and reconnect fees for delinquent accounts, amending Appendix A fee schedules, Section 13.02 water and wastewater rates and charges, 13.07, 13.07 electrical service and 13.09 utility fees, rates, and deposits, and providing effective date. A4 is second reading in accordance, amending the Bassdrop City Code of Ordinances, Appendix A fee schedule, Article 8, 13.02, water and wastewater rates and charges for peeling conflicting provisions, providing serviceability and providing effective date. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
No.
Moved by Councilmembership, seconded by Councilmember Del Rosso. Please call the roll.
Councilmembership?
Yes.
Mayor Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnallyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Del Rosso?
Yes.
Thank you all. Nothing under item B. Old Business, item C, second reading, C1, second reading in accordance with the City of Bassdrop adopting a budget and appropriate resources for fiscal year 2015-16, beginning October 1, 2015, and ending September 30, 2016, in accordance with existing statutory requirements for peeling all conflicting ordinances containing a serviceability clause and providing for effective date. Mr. Del Rosso, do you want to have an executive conversation about the utility matters before we deal with this?
We didn't post competitive matters. That's an oversight.
Mr. Del Rosso, you want to talk in public about what you have to write?
No, I may as well hold the stars.
Did you turn your mic?
It's not so much the issue of the budget itself. I'm pleased with the budget, it's just the tax rate. I think what concerns me most is that if, and maybe I'm the only one up here, I haven't heard anybody else speak to the matter of the 60 cents. heard anybody else speak to the matter of the 60 cent cap on the tax rate. So I don't know the position of other council members as far as discussion. Maybe it's, maybe it's a moot point on that. My deal was, I thought that was the goal of ours next year going into November of 16 on a ballot election. And by going a cent, a cent and a third above the effective tax rate, doesn't leave us much room to go out and offer to citizens other, a whole lot of, a whole lot of options on raising taxes if we, if we, now if we want to go above the 60 cent tax rate, that means that's, that's another issue itself. But I'm just concerned that the next year, Mike, help me out on this. I don't know if the, how the pattern evolves, whether next year the, the appraisal may come down and cause the tax rate to go up higher on the effective tax rate next year.
That's if they go, if they go down, but that's not anticipated. It's probably go up so your effective tax rate can down as well as.
So you're thinking, you're thinking we'll have another year where the, the trade values will keep climbing and the tax rate will keep falling?
Yes, because we've added some buildings, especially Auto-Gross and Crossing, that were not picked up in this year's appraisal, not going to be picked up next year.
Yeah, Mary, that was just my concern as far as, but the budget itself wasn't a concern. I don't, it's obviously with the, the issue with the going a cent and a third above the tax rate.
I want to apologize to the council that I overlooked the fact that even though we said at nine o'clock on last Tuesday that we would deal with this, instead of executive session last Tuesday, we do it this, this week, this day. I apologize for having neglected to put that on the agenda so that we could do what, you know, what you're asking to do that night. And I will work with Ann in the future to make sure that we don't make a mistake like that again. We have before us item C1.
I will answer any questions. We gave a detailed oversight at the public hearing last council meeting on September the 8th. The council did not receive any citizens' input. It's, it's just your pleasure if you want me to go through the highlights of the budget or not.
Okay. This requires a motion and a majority vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I move that we approve the second reading of the budget.
There's a second? Second, moved by council member Shipp, seconded by council member Gillan. Ready to vote? No discussion, please call the roll.
Councilmember Shipp?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnallyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Del Rosso?
No.
Thank you all. So we have a budget to work with for next year. Item C2, consideration discussion of possible action on ratifying the property tax increase reflected in the annual budget for fiscal year 2015-16, beginning October 1, 2015, ending September 30, 2016. Mr. Talbot?
Yes, this is just an important local government code, requires governing by the adoption budget which raises more revenue from property taxes than the previous year by separate code, the property tax increase reflected in the budget of vote under this subsection is in addition to and separate from the vote to adopt a budget or vote to set the tax rate by a chapter, code, or other law. The proposed 2015-16 budget will be raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous year and therefore require a separate code of the council to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget, though the tax rate remains the same 0.5640 as last year. At previous stage, we will be raising about, about 12,000 to 14,000 more in revenue than we did last year. And so we will need a vote to adopt that tax rate as required by law.
Here.
Yes.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
On, on 47, now there on the staff's recommendation, inches of percentage, percentage rate that I think will be included in the motion. But I just, I just want to clarify something in case I missed something wrong, but on page 49, on the bottom paragraph. I've got that under C3, am I mistaken?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I see what you're doing, okay. Are we waiting for that?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Questions, comments, motions?
I move that we ratify the property tax increase.
Second.
Gary and Kay. Ready to vote? Ann, please.
Councilmember Shipp?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnallyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillian?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Del Rosso?
No.
Thank you all. Item C3, second reading of an ordinance fixing the tax rate and levying on the City of Astro taxes for the purpose of paying the current expenses of the city for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2016, and for the further purpose of creating a sinking fund to retire the principal and interest of the bond indebtedness of the city, providing for a lien on all real and personal property to secure payment of taxes due thereon, containing a serviceability clause, repealing all ordinances and parts thereof in conflict herewith, and providing effective date. Mr. Talbot and Mr. Del Rosso.
This is an ordinance that will, you've approved, right, but it takes an ordinance to separate. Your motion wants to include the following language, that I move that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate of 0.564, which is the effectively of 2.4% increase in the tax rate. The ordinance starts on page 48. On page 49, it states the tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operation than last year, and the tax rate will effectively be raised by 2.97% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a home by approximately a dollar twenty cents.
Willie?
I was just asking, I just wanted to clarify what the difference was on 47 on the 2.4% and page 49 on the 2.97%.
On the bottom paragraph, page 49. Okay, I'm sorry, the, that says 2.97 and the, what you wanted to make in the motion was 2.4?
Yes, sir. It should be the 2.94. I'm sorry.
2.97?
2.97, I'm sorry, yes.
So Kelly, just?
It's just that, it's a type of, I move that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of the rate, fine, which is effectively a 2.94, um, excuse me, 2.97% increase in the tax rate.
Well, that's still legal, about a dollar twenty?
That's still, that's still the dollar.
Okay.
Questions?
It would be appropriate for someone to make a motion as I think you suggested an amendment by the city manager on item 8.
And I've agreed to have 47 on page. 47 just changed the percent, but that's what you've got at stake in your motion.
But we would substitute one number for another?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, I will make that motion. Let me read this. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.564, which effectively, is effectively a 2.97% increase in the tax rate.
There's a second? Second, council member McAnallyn. Discussion. Willie, you want to?
No, I'm sorry, my.
Anything else? Adam, second here, ready to call the roll?
Councilmember Shipp?
Yes.
Councilmember McAnallyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Del Rosso?
No.
We, well, we completed some work that began in June with us and goodness does win for the staff. I appreciate the work everyone has done, the civil way we have gone about it, and the way that all of us have had an opportunity to support our views, and above all, the citizens have had plenty of opportunities to come and speak to us. Under new business, item D1, consideration discussion of possible action on the council's view regarding Plan B for the Y and C. Actually, I, no, that's not stated as I wanted it, but I think J.C. will let me work through it. First thing I want to make sure is that we're on the same page. Like, as I understand it, even though when we had a meeting with the higher ups from the Boston Y and said they couldn't have a smaller Y, they changed their mind now and are proposing that with our 1.5 or 1.6 million dollars offered to them, that they can produce a Y of sufficient size to begin the process here and maybe add to it another day. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're looking at approximately a 20,000 square foot.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page about that's our first plan. I think it is, but I'm not sure we ever actually, I'm not sure how we talk about it. I want to make absolutely certain before we move any further that everybody's on the same page. Does anybody have any objections?
I don't, I don't have any.
Dick? Is that weapon?
I don't want to speak to this question. I don't have any interest in seeing that, the money going where it's going, I just is, but that 1.5 is not going to build a 20,000 square foot building.
No, they know that. Okay, okay. This is our full contribution. I just want to make sure. We will, we will provide the pass through money from the national government into that. They will provide what's necessary. We will have a memorandum of understanding. If it's not signed, sealed, delivered, ready to go, handover perfectly to the county judge in that 90-day extension we've got, then it won't go through.
And then we have to implement Plan B, which we're.
So, so, so let me, let me, let me mention that. I just want to make sure, are y'all anything on the, on the Y? I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Then I want to move to what might happen if the Y deal doesn't work.
Can you, can you clarify? I, I don't think I was in attendance at the meeting when you gave Mike the instruction to, to work with the Y. Can you clarify exactly what the instruction was and what you're working on?
Kelly, can I?
Basically, I'm putting together a memorandum of understanding as I stated in my city manager's report, which will basically say that if they get their part down, we will, the city's part will be to give them the 1.5. And of course, the council will have input on the facility that would be constructed. And I have met with them and they are outdoing what they're supposed to be doing at this time. Correspondingly, if that does not come to fruition, then we have to implement Plan B, which we are looking at building that we originally came up with and doing some value and assessments. And we think we can bring the cost down or we can build that building for about 1.5 million dollars. Probably at Bob Bryant Park because we are not including land cost in, in, in the cost of that, that building.
Would that, would that?
Are you okay on the instructions about the Y? Because I think you're about to do the Plan B.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kelly, let's finish up on the Y and then we'll go with Plan B.
So does that mean that you are no longer entertaining any other suggestions for the use of the money or?
No, that's what I want to go to after, after we make sure that we, Mike understands about the Y. I want to go, I want to go to that issue of what happens if, what's the plan, what the alternative plan is if the Y deal doesn't work. So that's, I wanted to make sure we did, we have both these things clearly understood and that you have an opportunity to give Mike one last shot at your thoughts before he, because he's got to live pretty quick.
So to clarify, Plan A is to work with the Y?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, Kelly? Oh, I've got a call, okay. So we, you're still on the Y?
Yeah.
Okay, Kay, Kay's got a question about the Y.
And I'm not sure if this is part of Plan B or Plan A, but I need to ask, if we should put the Y on Bob Bryant Park, would that affect in any way the Boys and Girls Club's contract?
Well, one, I don't think to decide that Bob Bryant would be sufficient for the size building that the Y is going to build. But if the city builds it down there, then it would impact it because the size building that we're proposing would fit on that site under Plan B.
So we're not being asked about the Y for any, for layout, we're just being asked for the 1.5 or 6 million. Right. Okay, do you have any other about the Y?
Uh, no, I, are we still at 90 days?
Yes, we're working our way to the 90 days.
So when, do we have a time to talk to the Y?
Yeah, I think, I think they'll be getting in touch with some of you individually.
And then you're going to come back with a memorandum of understanding pretty soon.
Hopefully on the October 13th.
And we'll see the final layout before the 90 days is up.
Yes, sir.
Well, we need to see it when before the 90 days is up, right?
Right.
So you're saying by the 13th of October, we should have?
You have a memorandum of understanding.
But what is the deadline for figuring out if Plan A is going to work or not?
I took it the 90 days from the end of September, which is, was our deadline. So I would say somewhere over November towards, about middle of December, end of December, we're going to have to have the decision.
And when is our deadline up, the 90-day extension deadline?
Uh, I'm just trying to, uh, the deadline was September 30th, so.
So December 30th?
Basically, yes.
Well, then will two weeks be enough time to come up with Plan B?
Oh, we're working on Plan B right now.
Okay, great, that's what I didn't understand.
I've got the other portion of this. Mike's going to have to work rapidly to get Plan B in place. We have to do simultaneous planning here. We're going on, we're going on a parallel track, parallel tracks.
That's great. Can I just take this opportunity to say that if we have backup information on some of these items on the agenda, then I think it would be a lot clearer and we'd have a chance to really research this because notice that our agenda items don't really have any backup information yet.
Yeah. Ann, let's make sure that we can work on that. And question me if I put one out of the question, council members or question staff so that we have as much backup as we can do. And there's an item or two like that tonight that could have stood at that and set up the verbal explanation you're going to have. So, yeah, so, yeah, do you have anything on the Y or back Plan B? Okay.
Kind of what the statement, manager said that the Y will be contacting us individually, but you know, the balls in there for it, they're the ones that have to come up and plan. There's nobody up here sitting at his desk and Mr. Schiff that understands construction costs and building costs. So other than talking to him, I don't know, I don't know why I'd be talking to anybody else because, I mean, they understand they got 1.6, 1.5, 1.6 coming from the city of the HUD money. And the balls in there for, I mean, I don't know what, what else that is that we can do but support them, but I, I mean, I don't know what else to do.
I'll talk to anybody that calls me, Willie, but you know, may not have a thing to say. So if they're going to call us, they'll call us and.
But Mike, Mike's Plan B is what he just stated a while ago.
Mike's Plan, no, let me talk about Plan B for a second. This is good to know. We have had several conversations, or several suggestions that were made at the workshop meeting where the Y said they couldn't do anything but a giant building. So we had several different suggestions that were made, several different kinds of buildings, several different uses. Mike mentioned some things. Subsequently, Gary has talked about the Opera House and the lot next to it, that is in Mike's, Mike's ear and brain. So I want to give one more chance if anybody has any other suggestions for Mike to consider before he comes back to us. Now's the time because he's got the move back.
I think though, before we move to Plan B, what if, to give Mike the direction he needs, what if we, and I'll make a motion, that we support Plan A as being the Y, that the first attempt that we would like to do with the grant money is to support the Y.
Yeah, let's get that on the table.
And so I made the motion that Plan A, the first thing that we do is focus on doing Plan A, the Y project of 1.5 million dollars.
There's a second?
I'll say, I thought they were voting on giving the Y.
Have we voted, Mike?
Mike, you were clear. You said you weren't...
I don't remember voting.
That's what I wanted to hear.
I don't remember, I don't remember voting. I remember us kind of giving nods of the head around the table.
I'm just saying, if we want to make it official, I'm willing to make a motion.
Say, say, okay.
Willie, second.
I'd like to wait and vote until Mike gives us the whole proposal because if, for some reason, there's a twist, which there's been a twist every time we've talked about this, I don't want to be locked into anything until Mike gives us the final word.
Well, I mean, my, my view on that would be, we're going to focus on Plan A and try to make it work and give him the direction to try to make it work.
Which we've done.
But simultaneously to that, we're going to talk about Plan B in a second. But I just wanted to say, let's try Plan A as the primary focus. Give, give him a definite, definite direction from the council if that's where we would like to go if it could work. But simultaneously, I'd like to have a Plan B, you know, or C or D in the works so that if Plan A fails, we do have a plan that will work.
So, your, your motion is Plan A is to work with the Y in some capacity, not to pinpoint down the location or the building in this motion?
Exactly. Just to say, that's your primary focus. We want you to focus A, number one, primary.
And that's your level of thinking that you're getting with that upgrade?
That's it. And that's it. That's all.
Wait a second, wait a second. Do we really want to limit ourselves here? Do we really want to limit ourselves?
I, I do because what we talked about at that workshop meeting, what I can talk to Arma and David about was that we had a plan where if they would reduce the size of the building, we could put that full money in there. We could get the building going. It would be a preliminary building and not the ultimate building, but we could live with another day to add to it if we need to. And that we wouldn't have to worry about anything but getting that money in place. And I think what we've heard from the Y is they can make that work and that we need to move hand in hand basis. So, that's why I think we ought to stick to that plan because Y's come back to us with that, with that suggestion. They have now agreed that's a good idea.
And Kay, my comment would be, where are you going to find the money to build a 20,000 square foot Y for a million and a half dollars? And that's what we're talking about is being able to build a 20,000 square foot Y for 1,500,000.
But what I understood was that with this motion, the city would not be allowed to put any more than 1.5 million into this. Is that correct?
That is correct unless subsequently we decide we want to put more in. But I'm saying, for our discussion today, we know we have a grant of a million and a half dollars. That's the given. Let's, I'm just saying, let's propose, let's propose that Mike focus first on the Y for the use of that million and a half dollars toward a 20-ish thousand square foot facility. If it starts falling apart and it becomes a 5,000 square foot facility, then we go to Plan B or Plan C.
I think we're talking at cross purposes here. Can I, can I?
I'm sure.
Okay. I want to commit the 1.5 million to the Y for Plan A. No questions, no hesitancy. What I don't want to do is limit the city on how much they can add to those contributions if, for some reason, we had a possibility to do that.
Let me just add, Gary, that what we're asked, invited to do is to respond to a request from the Y. It's not our request. We're simply saying, Mike, please work with what they suggested, what they think will work. And I'm saying, I don't think we ought to do anything but respond to them and say, do you want to be partners at this level?
So, did the Y say to you, Mike, that they could make, they could meet all the shelter grant requirements and their facility requirements with 1.5 million?
No.
So, there, there are more funds that will be required from the city?
They, that's what they want the 90 days for because to get to a 20,000 square foot building is going to require additional funding, which, as I understood it, they're going to use that time to go out and seek and find those funds.
Mayor, could I say something before we go in front?
Uh, sure. But then... In the last meeting, the comment was made in the meeting, the only contribution that we were making was that 1.5 million. And I found it in a minute where it said, the only cost to the city would be for the city to donate to the Y the city's portion of the shelter grant, which has a commitment deadline of September 30th.
Is it shelter voter?
Uh, it's under D3.
See, I just don't remember voting on it. And I really appreciate Gary's effort to try to clarify. You said, "Councilman, I'm not going to make a motion to..." Wait a minute, wait a minute. Hey, can you check, uh, Mike?
Does it really... I'm just saying, if it doesn't, we can have a motion right now to just clear this up. If that's what we need, let's just, if, I haven't heard anybody really talking against this. Everybody's arguing about something, but it's all...
Can you clarify your motion and exactly what your motion is?
The motion is that we instruct Mike to take the initiative to work with the Y and try to figure out that our, to donate our contribution of 1.5 million dollars toward a large 20,000 square foot-ish Y facility as the primary focus of our HUD grant money.
Uh, I think that's pretty clear. Is there a second?
I will second it. That's what I understand.
Okay. Uh, there's no discussion.
That's not all the money we're putting in for.
No. Okay, wait a minute.
That's not what we said in the meeting. We're, we voted on it, it's right here. It's eight, nine or minutes.
Let's, okay, Gary, your motion is...
My motion only addresses the 1.5 million dollars. I'm not putting any other money on the table on this motion. This motion is to work it out with the 1.5 million dollars. Obviously, if Mike comes back and the Y says, hey, we need 2.5 million dollars, my motion is invalid. I mean, we go, they bring it back to us and we either do it or we go to Plan B or C. But I think it's time to get on, get this one moving and let's go to Plan B discussion. And we'll have another motion on Plan B, which would be, make sure that you have a backup plan and we can talk about that in a minute. But let's get clarified on Plan A, that that is our primary focus.
Mayor, I'm, I'm sure that in, in the direction that we gave the manager in his MOU, that it was stated that the only contribution the city was making was the 1.5.
Would you mind just having a vote to reaffirm that? Because that's exactly what...
It's part of my motion. I'm moving that we commit 1.5 million dollars. That's all we're going to do.
That's not what you said in your motion. Gary, that's not what you said in your motion.
Now, let me ask, folks, we got to, we got to make a step forward here. We've got a partner that's willing to work with us. The motion says we're going to give 1.5 and I'm going to work with them to try to make it happen for the city. To me, that's pretty straightforward and I recommend you improve the motion.
Under those terms, I agree.
And have you, that job's the one you've got, what the manager just said, and it's what you understand?
That was my motion.
That was a motion. And there was a second by Kelly. Any other discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on this one with a rope on hand.
Council membership?
Yes.
Council member Gilligan?
Yes.
Mayor proship, Bill Rossett?
Yes.
Council member McEnally?
Yes.
Thank you all. And my understanding is that Mike's going to come back with any or, or some suggestions. It's okay with me if it's just a suggestion for what we do in case we cannot work out our primary objective. And I just wanted to give you all a chance to give Mike any additional, excuse me, give you all an opportunity to give Mike any additional information, our thoughts as he studies this out, because he's got to move pretty darn quick on both things. So, I've stated what I think is already been laid on the table. Want to ask if there are any other thoughts or ideas for Mike?
And the primary focus of Plan B is to, we're evaluating and costing out and believe that we can bring the cost of that building down and put it out at the Bob Ryan Park or possibly another location, but we're primarily focusing on Bob Ryan Park and, and that's where we're looking. And though the cost estimate that we originally looked at at 2.1, after spending some time last week really ripping those numbers apart and what we have to do to comply with the shelter grant, we feel that we can bring that cost down to a more reasonable amount. But that does not, I want to stress, does not include land cost.
I have a question, if it's time to ask.
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is to give Mike any, any thoughts or ideas you want, or instructions if you want to get it.
So, Mike, the, the facility that you're proposing at Bob Ryan Park, is it a community center? Is it a recreational facility?
It will be, I guess, oriented towards a recreational building. I, I would say it would be as much a multi-purpose use building. It, it will be fairly reflective of the drawings that you have previously seen. Seeing there'll be a, a large open area, maybe a reshuffling of the offices, maybe some different type of materials for construction. But the, the floor plan will be pretty similar to what you, you saw that we initially submitted.
Are you still considering the possibility of a public works office slash shelter or is that off the table?
Well, that's why I said potentially that we're looking at Bob Ryan Park, but there's a potentially another location which the design, the way we're putting the building together would give us the flexibility to go either way once we get there.
I just want to ask, Mike, I'm very sensitive to the fact that the Boys and Girls Club were given 10 years to try and find a building for that space. Would you like, looking to see if there's some sort of space we can offer Boys and Girls Club, should we?
That has been taken into account as we're relooking at the plans. We recognize that their programming is different and we've even thought of even making, like during the day, making the facility available to the seniors. I think it will be a little bit larger than the current senior building and then maybe in the afternoon for the Boys and Girls Club. That's, that's what we're thinking.
Okay, great. That's great. Thanks.
Did you say about trying to find a location other than Bob Ryan Park?
You did do your part.
Was that what you were looking for?
Would you repeat your two options for spaces, license?
Potentially, the primary spot at this point is, is Bob Ryan Park, but for some reason, that does not seem going to be feasible. We are looking at the public works area or somewhere in that vicinity.
Well, my deal is that if the family of Bob Ryan and his family gave that to, into the Boys and Girls Club, now, I think you're going to open up a can of worms if, for some reason, we come back in here and say, well, 10 years has been enough, we need to find them another location. I think we ought to work with them, give them every possible chance that we can to extend or whatever we need to do to ensure that they have every chance available to them to put a building on that site.
And that, as I said, is our, our primary focus and that is the design of the building to accommodate the type of programming that they do as well as taking into account other groups in the city that have expressed to the council previously the need for additional space.
Kelly?
I'd just like to stress not to, not to overlook the option of a public works addition to space since you told us that we are going to need space in the next few years and it's going to cost several million dollars. If there is a way to incorporate the grant with that, if, should the Y, please don't overlook that because the cost of running a recreation facility, as you've told us before, is pretty high. So, the, this is going to have to end up being a community center or meeting space in Bob Ryan Park rather than a rec center from what you've said before. So, please don't overlook the possibility of, of public works office so that we don't have to spend several million dollars later.
I'm very cautious of that. It's just, can we get the footprint to fit on the property? We have some limitations there, but the design is flexible enough to move whichever way and you'll ultimately make that decision.
Okay.
That's good. I'm good.
Okay, I think, Mike, you've heard from us and no other suggestions. I think we expect you to come back on both these matters with your recommendations and we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Item D3 is appointment and possible confirmation to the...
What's more?
What did I miss?
E2.
D2 is consideration, oh, sorry, Willie. Discussion, consideration discussion of possible action regarding possibility of building a road to connect Jessica Street and Riverside Grove with the eastern end of Nancy Lake Lake. Willie?
I did include the alignment of that street in, in your package tonight.
Thank you. Mayor, is there something that we didn't include that I want to tell with the B decision?
It, I can't speak for, I can't speak for Steve Vales, but I would put it on the table if you requested. So, Mike, you and I will go into that, our joint planning meeting and see what we can do to put this on the table.
Okay. Can I make one suggestion?
Uh, yes, and I just want to throw something at the city manager as we look at this, and that is the impact of that traffic coming through Riverside Grove. Has somebody looked at that?
Yes, we, we have looked initially at that. If you note where it ties in at, at Bob Ryan Park, that street is actually a wider street than the other streets in Riverside Grove. I think that was done for the potential of this. Secondly, I know the first block, you see the cul-de-sac and all the houses backed up to the street and don't face to the street. Now, beyond that first block, I would have to walk and verify that, but, well, I guess we'll get into it now.
Sorry.
From Shaffer to where they stubbed out at the end of the street where you go down Jessica, none of, it doesn't affect any of the houses because nobody backs out into Jessica. They all, like it's Nicole Way or whatever the streets are, they back out to those streets. Now, you probably, you're going to see some traffic because people are going to figure out that they can use that.
I'm just, I'm just seeing a lot of traffic come down Shaffer Street that's not there right now. You know, is the neighborhood up for that? Is the, you know, is that...
Where's it coming from?
If you came down 969, you came down behind Lowe's and you took the road instead of trying to, I'll tell you what, if I was coming down that road, I definitely wouldn't go to the traffic light at 304 and 71 because that light, there's, it takes three...
Exactly, it don't take you wrong. You're going to have a Shaffer.
Shaffer hanging around.
Absolutely. I'm going to Shaffer, I'd never get on 71.
Well, that's, that was part of the reason the street, number one, was for, for some of the traffic.
I'm just saying, you know, just realize if you do this, the traffic on Shaffer Street's going to double or, you know, it'd be 10 times what it is right now.
Can I ask how that would affect school traffic on Shaffer?
I, I know at one time, there was a very great discussion with the school and I think they were in favor because they could bring the school buses down through the back because they do use that street down coming off of, I mean, Olaz Highway on Shaffer Drive and then take a left and bring schools in, buses into the back.
Do we have any idea how much it would cost to bring that road through?
Without right-of-way cost, about 1.2 million. And that does not include right-of-way cost.
Okay, at the proposer's request, we're going to move this to the, Mike and I are going to attempt to move it to the joint meeting with the EDC, which will take place on the 3rd Tuesday of October.
Well, if you're, I was asking Chair of Board if she would put that on this agenda.
Uh, well, it's going to be a joint agenda, so...
Well, you can have a seat, I was asking if you could...
It wouldn't hurt, but I'll ask him, Mike and I will ask him to, we'll propose it from the city's perspective. So from your EDC membership, you've got, you know, one more shot at it, so I agree. Item, now item D3 is an appointment and possible confirmation of the council for member of Parks Board. We have a vacancy and I ask, I sought out Damien Winston because he's a person that provides a perspective, several perspectives that I think we need on this board. He's energetic, he's outgoing, he's bright, he's a youngish adult with children in school and comes with references by some leading citizens. He's lived here long enough to understand the community. And one other thing that I'm most concerned about, and I talked to Damian about this very candidly, that is we do not have the greatest diversity on that board. We don't have a person of color on there. And I'm asking, Damian is African-American, and I've asked him, and he's confirmed by you all, if you will, if he would pay a special attention to the African-American youth, especially in our community. And I think that's, there's nobody at the table that brings that quite as well as I think he would. And he said, yes, of course he would do that, and he would bring everything, every perspective he began, he would pay a special attention to that. So with that said, I appoint Damian Winston to the Parks Board and the City Advisory Board. I'll move.
Sorry.
Is there a second person?
I have some questions.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second. Kelly?
Did you say that there's a vacancy on the Parks Board that you're filling with this?
Yes.
Who's the vacancy?
I'm sorry, we didn't put the, we didn't put the, okay, another failure on our part was we didn't put a resignation by Josh Troy in here. I apologize for that. Don't know, if you want to see it, we can get it. Josh wrote a note, best I can remember, and can help me, saying that he really supports the Parks Board, he loves what the work is there, but he has a business on top of his teaching school, and he simply was not making the meetings and he needed to wait until a better time to circle that board.
Okay, that makes sense. I appreciate that.
I apologize once more for not having this in the bag. Other questions or discussions? I think we're ready to vote, Pam.
Mayor Fenton Delversen?
Yes.
Councilmember shit?
Yes.
Councilmember, do you owe him?
Yes.
Councilmember Matt now?
Yes.
Item D4 is appointment and possible confirmation of members of the Ethics Commission. This is one that I've given about half and put much of detail. I wanted to say it verbally because it requires some history. When we finished the work of the Ethics Commission by a wonderful group of citizens that we selected as a whole under Mayor Orr's leadership, we passed the ordinance that required the appointment of a Ethics Commission. Mayor Orr chose three people from that board that I thought represented a wonderful blend of citizen experience and professionalism. He had a judge, a preacher, a minister, and a police officer who does not work in Vazro. I really thought that was a great, a great blend. When I became mayor, I decided that, or before I became mayor, I decided that I was not gonna appoint anyone to a board, committee, or commission who was involved in partisan political office. And I, in my mind, that didn't apply to judges, but somebody on the, a couple of members of the council pointed out to me that Chris Dugan, ran as a Democrat, was elected as a Democrat, it is a partisan political office, and to be consistent, he would not, he would not be eligible. So I understood that, and that was a wake-up call for me. So I really liked Mayor Orr's alignment. So I spent, I also understood from conversation with JC, looking at our ordinance, that members of that board serve until someone replaces. So I called Chris and told him what I was gonna do. He understood, he was very supportive, he said, I'll do whatever you want. So I looked for a year for a judge. I thought I had somebody lined up a couple of times, but it didn't work. Last June, Kelly pointed out that we have, Judge Dugan's term ended in 20, what, where we're last year was 2014. And so I said, okay, I gotta do something about it. So I tried to find someone or a category that I thought would be commensurate with what I find is the value of the judge, and that is someone who can look at all issues at all sides and has to, has to weigh all sides of each issue. And I looked over the complexion, or the composition of our task force, and we had a licensed professional counselor on that commission. So I decided, I thought through, that I think is a category that could substitute for judge. So I talked to some of the counselors in town that I knew, and they recommended Troy, he goes by Lonny Ennis, who was a licensed professional counselor in the city of Vazro, lives in the city of Vazro. And so I talked to Chris and I told him I had a replacement back in June, and he said, I asked him if they had any pending work to do, because I didn't want to interrupt something that was ongoing. He said, yes, they had a night or two. So I said, please let me know when that's up. When, they had a meeting on July 28th, and I asked, he called me and said that he thought they were through. So I asked Troy to go ahead and apply. I think he replied the next day, apply, he applied the next day, I think. Meanwhile, the commission was asked to follow up on some things they had done, and they didn't have a meeting until last Tuesday. So they finished up last Tuesday. I talked to Chris, he said we're done, there's nothing pending. And so I submitted Lonny's name to you all. I have known him for quite a while, he is a very fair-minded man. He came, highly recommended, and as I said, I think he fits category as close to the attributes of the judge as I could find. And so I appoint Troy Alonso Ennis to the Ethics Commission.
Can I make some comments?
Of course.
First off, I would appreciate if you would have said that you were taking Judge Dugan off in your, in your agenda item, because it wasn't clear.
Well, I'm not taking him off, I'm appointing somebody to that place.
So is he, but he's leaving the Ethics Commission, this person is taking that place, right?
That's correct.
It's not, it's not clear in your agenda item that Judge Dugan was involved? And it took some digging to figure that out, which I don't think is fair to the council or to the citizens as far as transparency.
I certainly will put this off until the next meeting if you want to think about it.
Well, that's not my only issue with this, though.
I will write up what I just said, if that would help.
Well, that's not my only issue with this, though.
Well, is that one issue?
That is one.
Okay, I'll withdraw this and then I'll bring it up at the next meeting.
Do you want to know my others, so that we can address them all at once? Because I have another issue.
Unless you want to talk to me all night?
I could talk to you.
Okay, while it's still, okay, while it's still up, let's hear it.
Okay. I looked at the ethics when I found out it was Judge Dugan. First off, I'd like to say that Judge Dugan has served as well. He has, he was a member, as you said, of the formation of the Ethics Commission, and he has done an impeccable job. And there's really no reason to take him off other than you don't want to appoint someone who is partisan politician, which is your personal opinion, because last July, we said that was okay for the Ethics Commission in one of our meetings.
Well, I don't remember, the council's okay with that. I thought it was different. I talked to JC about it. I had a couple of council members say to me, they didn't think that was right. Now, if the council, you know, wants to advise me that I'll leave Judge Dugan on there, then we can talk about it.
I would like to find a way to keep Judge Dugan, and I believe that we already addressed it last July, and I think it's okay. But I would like for you to officially appoint him and not just have him pending, you know, hanging out there with a non-official term. So I want to figure out some way to do that, because I called in once I finally found out that it was Judge Dugan that was in question here, and he would love to continue to serve if the council would support him, and I certainly would.
And I certainly would, too.
I think having a lawyer, not only a judge, but somebody who really knows the law, when you're talking ethics, have somebody to address the legal ramifications of an ethic issue, I think is very key, and I think he's a very important member of that board.
I agree, and I would like to, Ken, if you would like to keep him on there, I would like to help make that happen, because I think he's great.
Do you see a distinction between a person that's a judge and say a person that's a county treasurer or something like that?
For this particular committee?
In terms of the partisan politics? Yes, in terms of this particular.
I do, because I think a judge adds the needed, as Gary said, the needed legal expertise and the needed background in judging all sides of the story from a different perspective. I don't think a county treasurer has that experience, but I think on the Ethics Commission, a judge, we elect our judges in Texas, so unless you can find a retired judge, you gotta have an elected guy. And Judge Dugan has given us no reason whatsoever to think that he is not fair and impartial. And so if you are good with that, I would like to help you keep him on there. And he's a good mistake.
Well, I will say that Judge Dugan said to me what he said to you. He also said he can help us out by not serving, he won't serve. He feels he's a public servant in every form of work. And he spends a lot of his time in public service, and even though he does live in the city of Vazro, he's eager to help us. And obviously, he was the chair, not only on the original committee, he was the chairman of the committee, he's been the chairman of the commission since it was formed, no question that he's a valuable player. So.
So would you support keeping him then?
I'll think about what you said. So let me ask, are you?
I'm responding.
Oh. Are you, were you wanting to replace him because you talked to members of this body? No, I wanted, that was your own personal. I wanted to replace him because I had a, I developed a policy that I didn't think it was helpful and appropriate in a governmental entity that is absolutely forbidden to have partisan politics involved. We cannot run as a party person, we have to run as nonpartisan. That's true for school board members, it's not true for other elected officials in Texas. But that was a scruple that I had and something I thought that was important, that we keep ourselves clear from that. And I was persuaded last year that the same thing applied to Chris, it's applied to, now maybe it wasn't supplied, I wasn't supported by everybody apparently, but I was, or not challenged by, but I was challenged by others, that it applies to one person, applies to another. And so I've got to, you know, I have to think through that. If, for whatever reason, I mean, I would support him if his name were brought back to this body for reappointment, but that's your call.
I just want to say that Mr. Lonny Ennis, I very much appreciate that he would step up to the plate, but I see no reason at all to replace Judge Dugan if he is agreeable, and he is, to staying on. I think, Ken, that the reason you appointed him, if I remember correctly, was that he was impeccable.
I didn't appoint.
No, you didn't, you're right.
Chair Gordon.
Chair Gordon, yeah.
There's one other issue, and maybe I can, yeah, go ahead, JC.
I'm gonna be able, and I'm sorry.
Try to get one to work, JC, it's important.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
To the council and the people in attendance, what happened last year with this, okay, there it is, what happened last year when this issue was raised by you, Mayor?
And the reason I'm bringing it up is because it's not reflected. It's not reflected accurately in our current code of ethics because it was not codified. Is that you brought the issue to the council and asked for their input, and at that time, the council agreed with you that having a judge on the commission was appropriate, and they struck the last sentence of the original ethics ordinance, Mayor, that originally read, members of the Ethics Commissions may not hold or be a candidate for any city elected or appointed office at any time during your service on the Ethics Commission. And that was strictly, it's not shown as a deletion on the ordinance that's currently on the website, and we'll get that cleared out with Franklin Publishing.
JC, this is televised, I think, could you come up to the front so that everybody could get here? I'm sorry.
I apologize. I just want to make sure that y'all are all.
While you're considering this, you're all looking at an accurate version of the city ethics code. Back in July and August of last year, when this issue was raised by the mayor concerning whether or not it was appropriate to have a judge on the Ethics Commission, he brought an amended ordinance to the city council regarding keeping a judge on the Ethics Commission. The city council generally agreed with the mayor that it was appropriate because of the judicial nature of the work done and the legal expertise. And to reflect that, the city council agreed to strike the prohibition that says that the Ethics Commissioners may not hold or be a candidate for city office. And the reason that jumped out at me is because when I looked at the Ethics Commission that's on the website, that sentence is still reflected there. But in fact, y'all have an ordinance on file that struck that, and apparently that's one of the ordinances that did not get conveyed to Franklin Publishing, but it will be. So I just want y'all to have a look.
That sentence was proposed by the committee that proposed the original ordinance?
That sentence was, the result, I think the minute you reflect it, that sentence was a compromise by the council as a result of a discussion to assure you that having an elected official or a candidate on the commission would be appropriate.
Let me ask you again, that sentence was included in the original proposal of the ordinance by the councils?
Yes.
That we originally passed.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we don't know, we don't know what the Ethics Commission thinks about that change.
We didn't ask the Ethics Commission about that change. The city council.
We just did it ourselves.
Used its unilateral authority to amend the ordinance, yes.
Thank you. I see further red lines, anybody want to drop? Gary, you got no red line. Okay, I appreciate the conversation and the advice, we'll deal with this another time.
I do have one further question.
Okay.
Of JC, actually, because I pulled the ethics ordinance, and I don't know if this applies or not, but maybe you can clarify. In the, in the section about removal of Ethics Commission members, it says, an Ethics Commission member may be removed by majority vote of the city council for cause only. I don't know if that applies in this situation, because he's serving this determinate term? I don't know. Can you explain?
It would be my opinion that it does not apply in this particular position, because I believe he's holding over, he's not in a current term and being removed during his term, so I would say that that particular provision is not applicable in this particular case.
I wouldn't want anyone to think that he was being removed for cause.
So it's incorrect to say he's being removed.
He's not being removed.
Right, and that was not my intention. Yeah, and I've had plenty of conversations with it.
But he is, under your proposal, being replaced?
No. I have to, every, every term that comes up, I don't care if he's been on a commission for 25 years, it's a new term. And the mayor appoints somebody for that term, whether they've served on it before, they're on the board then, or never been on it before, it's always a new term. And so I have to look at every, I look at every case, and often, I've reappointed people that are currently serving on a commission, committee, or board, but not all of them.
So what's your plan of action now?
I'm gonna think about it. I've heard a lot tonight, and JC added to it, and I'm gonna think about it.
Come back later. Come back later with the-
Yeah, I'll come back later.
Okay, because I, I would like to reiterate that if you do want to keep Judge Dugan, would you please officially appoint him so that we don't have him in limbo?
Well, I mean, you're the one that raised that issue in June, and I've been trying to respond to it over the summer. So that's why, how I got to deny it. I appreciate your insistence. Item D5?
That is withdrawn from the-
Was drawn from the agenda and will be resubmitted back on the October 13th agenda. Item D6, consideration, discussion, and possible action on-
Ken, wait, wait, I need to ask something. Do we still have, at this moment, do we still have the same three members on the Ethics Commission that we did a minute ago?
Yes.
Yes.
On our ordinance laws. Chris will serve, I guess, as long as he's alive or lives in the county, he will serve till his replacement is, is appointed. Either, somehow, his term will be up at some point. He only gets two terms, I think, so.
And so will this be resolved next week?
I'll, when I, I don't know. I'll give it as soon as I can.
Okay.
Item D6, consideration, discussion, and possible action on a resolution of the city council in the city of Baskerville, Texas to adopt 44 CFR. There we've withdrawn D5. Am I correct?
Yes.
Was drawn.
I agree. It will be resubmitted on October 13th.
44 CFR 13.16 as the standard procurement policy for the city of Baskerville with a procurement of hazardous litigation services. Mr. Tal.
We're just complying with the grant applications. I wrote a letter saying that we would stringently adhere to 44 CFR 13.16. They responded back, "Appreciate my letter, but also want a resolution from the council." We are totally in compliance with all of the procurement standards. This is just a formal name to satisfy the federal government.
I move second.
Yes.
208,000. Turn your mic, come on. 208,000, please. That's part of the, one of the, has been a great few grants we got.
A grant?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like a motion? Is that what you said, Mike?
Yeah, we, we act, the council has to officially adopt this resolution.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
You officially adopted this resolution.
We know, we know. Okay, y'all ready to vote? Okay, Andy, please call her up.
Councilmember Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Delverson?
Yes.
Thank you all. D7, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the first reading of ordinance of the city council in the city of Baskerville, Texas, amending section 1.15.001 and 1.15.031 Ethics Ordinance in the Code of Ordinances of the city of Baskerville, providing a serviceability clause and providing an effective date.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is item D7, beginning on page 76 of your packet tonight. The city of Baskerville Ethics Commission met on September 15th, and after due consideration and discussion, is making this resume a recommendation to the council, amending the reference sections of 1.15.001 and 1.50031 of the Ethics Ordinance. Beginning on page 78, the Part 1A and BA and BA1 and BA5, the wording in the yellow and the wording in blue and red is the changes or expansion that the commission requested be inserted, inserted, and to clarify any misunderstanding regarding that particular section of the ordinance. On page 79, number 6, again, the area in the blue, and number 9, the blue and the red, and 9A1, the area in the red, and 9A2, the area, the lettering in the red reflects, again, some insertion for clarification purposes regarding this section of the ordinance. As I previously stated, the board did deliberate this and spent some time inserting these words on these two pages for clarification. It is their recommendation to the council for past time, refer back to the mayor.
I want to say the same thing that I said when we first got the draft. Governor? I want to say when we first, I want to say the same thing I said when we first got the draft of the original Ethics Ordinance. I think that the last people that should be deciding what should be in the Ethics Ordinance is the council, and I think we ought to go by what they recommend, what they suggest, and I think that this one is the same, I feel the same way about anything they propose, because this is intended to govern us, not for us to necessarily govern ourselves. So I recommend that y'all approve this. Any more discussion?
D7?
It is D7, yes.
May I tell you, for a second?
This will be the first reading. I'm sorry. Make the motion. Okay, anything willing. Mike?
And you want to sound a consent next time?
Yes, please.
Okay. Could I ask a question? There's attorney, right. Would it, would it serve right in these minutes that this could be part of the mess that, that we appointed, like Chris Dugan, or whatever it is we've met? It says Judge Chris Dugan. So you've got a reverend and you've got a reporter.
Can you read the full name?
Well, I can't say tax name, so. I don't know how to spell it. Sergeant, on, on the second we're at on page 77 of the ordinance, I mean, it just said the council appointed the honorable Chris Dugan. What do we know, where did it have Judge Chris Dugan?
The honorable is that.
Yeah, honorable, elected official. Well, the honorable elected official.
That's the appropriate title to-
For judges.
Judge, yes, sir. But if you prefer us to say that, it-
So we couldn't address her or, should I do that? Should I do that?
If you use the phone, will you give advice now?
It's not whatever. Yeah, I think, and it's like, you don't say, well, I'm not going to say it anymore.
We'll take, we'll take care of it.
So advice from our, at least one attorney present is, that's what you call them. We got another advice attorney? The honorable, makes sense to you? Okay, we, we had a motion in a second. Can you, no? Sorry. Y'all ready to vote? Andy, please call her up.
Councilmember McEnroe?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Delverson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilley?
Yes.
Okay, item, thank you all. Item D8, this-
What?
Discussion, consideration, possible action regarding possible recalculation of the grant tentatively awarded to the Boys and Girls Club for fiscal year 2015-16, removing Councilmember Gilley's allocated amount due to the potential conflict of interest. Councilmember Gilley and the city manager.
After our most excellent ethics training last week, it occurred to me that because I weighed in on the amount that, that the amount that the Boys and Girls Club should receive under social services grants from the city, that I may have, I have a potential conflict of interest because I have a contractual arrangement with a board member on the Boys and Girls Club. He did not request the funds. We have not spoken about the funds, but in order to make sure that there's no appearance of impropriety, I'd like to remove my vote on just the Boys and Girls Club from that action. And you can see on the, on the attachments, the difference it makes, I think, is $800 if you remove my contribution to that.
Page 82 reflects Kelly's vote, and page 83 reflects her not voting, and the Boys and Girls Club drops by about $900.
Is it possible to ask the city to go ahead and leave the $800 in?
That, or the $900? That's why we put-
I agree.
That's why we put both of them in there, so the council can make the decision. Kelly's gone on record that she's recusing herself, so this is a matter of policy for the council to decide, but Kelly has totally refused.
Yeah, I, I think it's fine. I think it's honorable that you did that, but on the other hand, we've already voted to approve those funds. I'm happy with the funds the way they are, and I think if the rest of the council go along, I think we can approve the funding exactly the way it was.
That, that was going to be my motion, but I don't know if a motion's appropriate here, is it?
Yeah, I see your motion.
Okay, so I move that we-
Just reaffirm the allocations of fund that was previously approved by the council, noting that it does not include Ms. Gilley's participation.
And I second.
And it still adds up to $80,000, correct? Correct.
79, 100. You got the last change to-
But if we were approving page 82, correct?
I'm sorry. I was looking through, I made you right there. I'm sorry.
So it will still add the same amount that we agreed to do, and it allows us to do something that sounds like all the council members present want to do, except the council of Gilley, who will not be participating in this conversation or vote. They had a motion in a second. I don't know who it was. Andy, no? Could we please call her up?
Councilmember McEnroe?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Delverson?
Yes.
Okay, Mike, what do we have for executive session?
Since you really did do a monumental job in passing the budget tonight, I don't see anything perishing that has to be gone into executive session, so it's my recommendation that we adjourn the meeting. Y'all go ahead.
I still move.
Oh, that is.
Andy, please call her up.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis? Yes.
Mayor Proton Delverson?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnroe?
Yes.
All right. We're, we stand in turn. Thank you all very much. Audience, crowd, staff, thank you very much.